At this time, I'll call on Commissioner Burris to have our infocation and pledge to the flag of this great nation.
To heaven and to God, we come forward this morning sitting in the residence of the county. We meet and discuss issues special like accounting. Random disturbance will make decisions that impact so many lives. Give us courage to act justly and promote common good even when it's difficult. Open our ears to listen to one another and the citizens whom we serve. Suffering hearts with empathy and understanding, guided by example through integrity and understanding of your holy name and glory. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. This carpet's just rolled up. Tell the commissioners you have a proposed agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the proposed agenda?
There is no change. Mr. Burris, move to accept the agenda for today's meeting.
Do I have a second, Zach? Have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously. We also have a consent agenda for today's meeting. Is there a need for any change to the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, on the notes it said, "Read over."
Yeah.
It says "scallled over." We're gonna change that to "salted" though. That might get buried by the time we leave this world.
Salted cover, oka-
Yeah, salted before.
Okay.
They're planting it in November.
Okay. A good hope for this, I would say. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for a public hearing on CDBGI application. Mr. Rich.
Good morning.
Good morning.
And just kind of, yeah, I guess, yeah, give them some background information on what we're doing too. Each year, the Community Development Block Grant Program, which in the past has been predominantly a housing renovation rehabilitation program. Back in 2013, state legislature wanted to take monies that the state got appropriated from HUD and instead of putting it all into housing, wanted to allocate those funds for infrastructure. So since 2013, you know, the state has taken about 50% of the funds they get from HUD and put it into their infrastructure program. Applications are received once a year. And this year, the state announced that they would have about $24 million where they would have funds available on October 2nd. In order to apply, units of government are the only eligible applicants and you must have a project that benefits a low moderate income area of at least 51%. And you can document that low moderate income either by door-to-door income surveys, you know, which we've done in the past, or if you have an area that has area-wide benefit. Each municipality has an assigned area-wide benefit, low moderate income percentage number. And in addition to that, there are census data places, which are unincorporated municipalities, that also have area-wide low moderate income percentages that are area-wide. To apply, you have to conduct a public hearing. At the public hearing, you must disclose what that application is and you have to have the application complete by the time that you have the public hearing. The timeline this year was such that we really don't have any time to do door-to-door surveys. So really, the only opportunity was to be able to try to find an eligible applicant that was area-wide low moderate income. When the announcements came out, we recognized the timeline was a little short. County manager really wanted to make some pursuit that would be a benefit to the citizens of Green County. And so, in trying to strategize what would be an opportunity, you know, really came up with the Maori wastewater treatment plant, which we pursued back in 2014, but were not successful. And what we feel is that bringing it back, that there will not be as many applications this time, that we've probably got a pretty good opportunity to do some good for, you know, for the Maori community. So that's why we're here this morning, to kind of structure, to go over what we view as an opportunity to benefit in an area that is designated as predominantly low moderate income. So while I got in your agenda package, there's some niblets that I have to go over as part of the requirement of the public hearing. At the end of briefly going through this, we'll certainly open the floor to comment and comments or questions from any of the board members. So, you know, what we're doing here this morning, having a public hearing. We've got a quorum present. You know, we're here to basically state that we're looking for citizen input, really not only for this project, but for any community development need that the citizens may want to identify, that, you know, maybe we can incorporate it in this application, but we can incorporate it into something in the future. What we're proposing this morning is to apply for funds to renovate the Maori wastewater treatment plant, which we described as 2023 Maori, you know, WTP improvements. In general, the purpose of the CDBGI program is to, you know, improve the quality of life for low moderate income by providing safe, clean environment, clean drinking water through water and sewer infrastructure improvements to benefit residential area with at least 51% of beneficiaries of low moderate income as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to perform eligible activities, minimize displacement, and provide displacement assistance as necessary. And that would be for if there is a homeowner that has to be displaced as a result of construction, the program pays for any interim rental to displace that resident, which is not going to occur as part of this project. For this current fiscal year, you know, CDBG infrastructure has about $24 million of grant funds available, where maximum available grant per applicant, which has to be a unit of government, is $3 million. And the most that any unit of government can have is $3 million over a three-year period. And that is trying to make it so that, you know, the same unit of government is not getting $3 million every year in an effort to try to spread the money around across the state. Applications for funding are received today, October 2nd, 2023. The CDBG program is able to fund a wide variety of community development activities. The state, North Carolina, has chosen to fund water and sewer infrastructure, neighborhood revitalization, COVID-19-related projects, and economic development projects that lead specifically to job creation or retention. The infrastructure program, or CDBGI, can, you know, fund a range of water and sewer infrastructure and economic development activities to include, but not limited to, for water-related projects that resolve water loss and distribution systems that extend public water to areas with contaminated wells, to extend water lines to areas with dry wells, assist with low water pressure in public water systems, regionalize two or more water systems, and provide, rehabilitate, or replace a water treatment plant. For wastewater, eligible projects that resolve overflow and infiltration to collection systems and surcharges from pump stations and manholes, projects that extend public sewer to areas with failed septic tanks, projects that rehabilitate wastewater treatment plant to allow for greater efficiency or compliance with regulations. The county is seeking an amount in CDBG infrastructure funds not to exceed $3 million for what we're referring to as 2023 Maori wastewater treatment plan improvements. And the purpose of the request is to renovate the existing Maori wastewater treatment plant, you know, that's located at 936, still being in progress, to provide an area-wide benefit to all residents within the designated Maori census data place. Project scope is identified in Maori Capitality Plan and there's been informal community meetings and discussions with representatives of Maori to get feedback and to, you know, make sure that the proposed improvements are, you know, targeted to goals or system-wide programs that they have. 100% of proposed funding is, will benefit low moderate income people. In the Maori census data place, there's an area-wide income survey of 53.72% low moderate income. If funded, the range of activities covered by CDBG infrastructure funds will include construction, environmental review, engineering design, construction administration and observation, legal activities, surveying, and grant administration. If Green County is awarded a CDBGI grant, the county will be required to adhere to federal procurement requirements and other federal regulations, which will include compliance with the American Disabilities Act, Section 504 survey, Davis Bacon and related labor acts, applications submitted of a citizens' participation plan, equal opportunity plan, fair housing plan, language access plan, relocation assistance plan, Section 3 plan, and excess force provision plan. State of North Carolina requires that if Green County receives CDBG grant funding, the county will certify they will comply with the requirements of the general displacement and relocation policy for CDBG grant funding. This policy assists low moderate income people with costs associated with relocation or displacement. Should such relocation become necessary due to the project activities, CDBG funds can be used for those costs if necessary. And it is confirmed that the proposed scope will not result in any displacement activities. In the past, the county has applied for and received for, you know, the following CDBG projects, which include 2016 CDBG infrastructure sewer improvements for $2 million, a 2004 infrastructure hookup grant of $75,000, 2003 concentrate needs housing project of $700,000, 1994 CDBG housing water improvements project of $850,000, a 1992 CDBG housing water improvements project for $156,000, a 1991 CDBG housing water street improvement project for $450,000, and a 1989 CDBG housing water street recreation improvement project for $600,000. County will submit CDBG application on October 2nd, you know, 2023. Application will be available for review during normal business hours at the Green County Manager's Office. Additional information is available at calling the Green County Clerk at 252-747-3446 should, you know, you have any complaints or grievances regarding the subject of public hearing. They should be addressed to the address that you mentioned above within 15 business days and a written complaint and grievances will be sent by the county within 15 business days, if we're practical. And we're noting in this public meeting that this chairman is authorized to adopt the minutes of the public hearing. And that's because we've got to provide minute extracts verifying that this information was disclosed in the public hearing as part of the application that's submitted today. This is a, an opportunity, for lack of a better word, you know, where we're just trying to get, you know, $3 million to really come into Green County, to help out Green County. You know, earmark here, we're looking for it to go to Maori wastewater treatment plant. You know, we tried it in the past, so this is kind of a follow-up, see if we can, you know, do a better job and get it funded this time. So be glad to entertain public comment or any, you know, questions or comments from the board.
I got a question.
Yes, sir.
The sewer system out there on Sibia Farm, will it take more than Maori or will it just do Maori?
Right now, it's permitted at, I think, 250,000 gallons a day. And it, there is the ability to potentially expand the capacity of that plant, you know, based on not only the upgrade, but, you know, with improving the level of treatment that's provided by the plant with regards to primarily nitrogen removal. So the capability of serving more than 250 exists. It's just got to be implemented.
What does Maori do now? Do you know it?
In terms of, yeah.
250 gallons?
Oh, the current average flow is, I think, they're operating at about 60%, you know. You know, so they've got capacity. And they're certainly like anybody else. When they have these significant rainfalls, the flows go up. But
Right.
they are, they have capacity. But they need, it's an opportunity to really set them up, to extend it, to really, you know, look out for a much broader community.
That's what I want to know. Now, what's the thing that's on Borough Street that goes to that sewer system? Is that a pumping station?
Is that the one that's got like the big rake?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the main pump station that all the flow in town. That's a mechanical bar screen that rakes the solids out before it goes to the treatment plant.
And dumps them in the dumpster.
Yep, and dumps it in the dumpster. That's exactly right. And there's supposed to be another one at Eastern Correction Institute, but it doesn't function as well. So that's why that was put in place, to help further stream the solids before it got to the treatment plant.
Will this anyway help with the prison?
Yeah, and, you know, prison, yeah, and, you know, and I don't know where they are in terms of, you know, capacity in terms of the, you know, I know they're 1,100 feet capacity of the main one. You know, realistically, you know, their needs are met. This really enhances to ensure that their, you know, their services, their level of service is maintained. Hopefully, long-term, you know, it's an opportunity where you can expand the facility and really broaden the service area, maybe take in the Maori Correctional Facility over there as well.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the CDBG-
I close call here.
Let's, let's, we need to close the public hearing.
Well, I'm sorry.
One last call. Do we have any comments from the public or anyone on this board before we close the public hearing? Here none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Commissioner Jones.
At this time, I move to approve the CDBG grant on first to improve the wastewater treatment plant for Maori.
Aye, sir.
Have a motion and a second to approve the CDBGI application. Need a further discussion. Here none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you very much. Go after the money.
Correct. And I do point out, you know, in the resolution, the package, you know, certainly we authorized the chairman to sign all the application exhibits and everything else. I have never run into this. The resolution appoints the chairman to sign the documents, but the chairman, for some reason, is now not allowed to sign the resolution that appoints him. And so, the resolution authorizes the vice chairman to sign the resolution. I had never seen this before. You know, but, you know, it was better. It was like, I always feel like it's the golden rules and they got the gold, so they're making the rules. So that's why you see that in there and that's, you know, yes, Rich is getting older and he's losing a little bit, but he hasn't lost it that much yet.
Step to the side just a minute. I don't see where you've lost anything.
Right. I'm working on it.
We appreciate you and do what is appropriate, legitimate, and accurate within the application process. Do the best you can.
Yeah.
And thank you so much for all you do.
We appreciate y'all.
Thank you. At this time, I'll open the floor for public comments if we have any. If we do not, so we move on to the county managers report.
Thank you, sir. Just one item for action this morning. A budget amendment for recreation is requested. As we repaired the drainage issue behind the recreation complex, the manager used up a substantial portion of the recreation's budget for that specific line item. And the department has asked that half of that money be replaced and they'll try to stretch it through the year. If they cannot, then probably come back, ask for more. But they are taking a very active approach and monitoring the budget, which is great to see. Are there any questions?
Move to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, nay. The ayes have it. The motion is carried unanimously.
Thank you.
Madam County Attorney, do you have any pearls of wisdom at this time?
No comment.
Thank you. Commissioner Ruck reports recommendations. Okay.
Just to remind you, this is a new year. Our department can have support and records this Saturday, on October 7th. This is my department, office for months having a bunch of chicken silk, living in the center of the station. I want to take a moment to congratulate two Green County natives that recently inducted into prestigious hall of fame. On September 8th, Bob Taylor of Snoville was inducted into the 2023 Brooklyn Tennis Association Hall of Fame. And on September the 14th, Stephen L. Bayman, another Green County native, was inducted to the Brooklyn Bar Association Legal Fighters Hall of Fame. As you were, Mr. Bayman, was recognized by the Weston County at their last meeting, always in the hall of fame. This is one that can remember to congratulate both of them.
Thank you.
You said Fort Run, head there as well. Fort Run, November?
November 7th.
November the... 7th. What was before that? What was before that?
The Shun-
The Shun of Snow Hill.
Oh, okay.
Forces giveaway.
Forces giveaway. All right.
Forces giveaway Saturday.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else before we go into closed session?
Let us not forget the theme for Coach Fordham coming up on the 19th.
About to. That's what we're doing.
At Green Central Cafeteria. I believe that's correct. You know what you want to do?
Green Central.
Central.
Green Central High School, starting at 5:30.
At Cafeteria.
Good job.
Starts at what time?
The social starts at 5:30.
5:30. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Is that PM or AM?
PM.
Okay. Any other commission reports, recommendations, comments before we go into closed session?
Move to go into closed session, Mr. Chairman.
For the purpose of attorney-client privilege, have a motion and a second. Need a further discussion. Here none. Those in favor of the motion signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion is carried. The ayes have it unanimously.
I would like to make a couple of other announcements that we didn't make earlier. We talked about the sports and this is giveaway Saturday. I think the doors open at 12 and the auction starts at 1. That's always a big event for Shine and Snow Hill Volunteer Fire Department. Also, Free Union Original People Baptist Church will have this golf tournament on the 13th at Cutter Creek. That's an event that we have every year.
And Orman'sville is having theirs on October 6th.
October 6th for Orman'sville. And also going into the month of November on November 4th, Fort Run Fire Department is going to be having a barbecue chicken sale on November the 4th.
Also, October 18th, Greene County is having a baseball, softball, golf tournament to raise money for Greene County baseball and softball.
Okay.
That's October 18th.
Yeah, at Cutter Creek.
Cutter Creek.
I think they're pretty close to being full.
Here and now, nothing else, they will have a motion that we adjourned.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Second. Have a motion on second, need a further discussion. Here and now, those in favor of the motion signify as saying aye.